You all come to our house. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Wilcox for the presentation of the Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for coming this morning. This morning, we have a presentation of our education master facilities plan, and we didn't intend to have you divided so, school board, board. It's just that when we printed them, we printed them separately, and I walked around earlier and just kind of laid them out, not even thinking that you would actually sit where the tags were. Because all of you are really pretty strong individuals, I thought you'd just move and sit by each other, so I apologize for that.
Dr. Wilcox, most of us have a Washington County education and know how to follow the rules.
Then we've done our job. First of all, I want to say, as Boyd and his team kind of get ready to show you what we've done, we're absolutely committed in Washington County to creatively using the spaces that we have. We've had some great conversations at the board's request about how we might think differently about the use of some of our facilities, and how we might use those facilities and programs to spur kind of the economic development of the community. And an example of that, it was Dr. Harding and other board members said, well, you know, what if you look differently at the space you're currently thinking about downtown, next to Barbara Ingram, and thought of it not so much as a performing arts school, but as an academic hub? So Bisso would stand as the performing arts school, but right next to it perhaps would be an academic hub that would allow us then to bring programs like the culinary arts, cosmetology, and others downtown, where the kids would go to school in the academic hub, but by day, they would have internships and externship opportunities, really on Main Street, if you will, or North Potomac probably is a better way to say that. That said, we're thinking about that, we're talking about that internally, we have no specific plan at this point in time, but we are thinking about that. The board also said to us, you know, you have five middle schools that were all built in the 70s, they're all aging, they're about 50 years old, and, you know, there's no specific plan for looking at those spaces. And those spaces were built as open concept schools, so we're also thinking about, is that the best way to educate in the 21st century? Do they have the technologies that they need? Do the teachers have the creative spaces they need? So, we're thinking about that, but in thinking about that, one of the things the board, in its wisdom, saw was that we had to readjust our CIP plan. We couldn't be looking at that big $100 million project in the future, we maybe had to come forward and do something a little different in the short term. But as we worked through that, we saw that, you know, we do continue to grow, we're growing about 100 kids a year, maybe a few more than 100 kids a year. The unfortunate thing is, in that growth, we are seeing more impoverished kids, kids coming from challenging circumstances, and those kids require a little different spaces, little different sets of services. The social services we find are starting to creep more and more into our building, so we're no longer just academic institutions. And that said, I think what you're going to see from us is a plan that's a little bit different than you've seen before. You're going to see that we have a lot of good thinking done, and a lot of good thinking yet to do. But one thing that I don't think we can escape is the fact that we are growing, and because we're growing, we're going to ask the county commissioners and our board to keep an open mind towards some land banking, making sure that we can do what we need to do in the future. They always say there's no time like today to buy, prices are only going to go higher. I'm not sure that any of us can ascribe to that anymore, but at the same time, I think we have to be eyes wide open to the future here in Washington County. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Boyd, he's going to walk you through our MF, our master facilities plan. And we're open to any questions about anything. I would simply tell you, as you look at this, keep your eyes open, because there are a lot of people who are asking you for a number of like $400,000 for something, and they don't have a plan, we've got a plan. So if you decide that you want to spend some extra money with us, we'd take it, all right? And we'll do some good things for you. So here you go.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wilcox, and good morning to both boards. This morning, we're just going to briefly run through the educational master plan that our board has already seen and has approved for the coming years. One thing we always describe to our board is how this is certainly an annual process, it's something we need to submit to various state agencies, as well as to the county agencies. It's a very fluid process in that every year, we reassess, you know, where we are, what we see for projections, what the conditions of our building might be at the time, those types of things. That's why from one year to the next, if someone pulls out a plan from five years ago, it might look very different than today. So certainly, it reflects our latest thinking and best planning, and as Dr. Wilcox, our best thinking for right now. And it's a collaborative effort. We work hard with the state, we work internally hard as the staff to make the right decisions, and we also work with county staff, and then certainly as partners with the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners to make this a reality for our needs here in Washington County as far as facilities. Our educational master plan is developed of five chapters. The first four chapters really are the background information that helped build chapter five, which really summarizes our facilities' needs for the future, and then that chapter's used to develop our state and county CIP, which is the money. So we talked about the educational master plan, that's the planning document, not the money document, but it drives the CIP, which is, you know, obviously our funding request. Other documents that we work on, the comprehensive maintenance plan, which will come forward this fall, and again, all these pieces come together to help provide excellent facilities for the education of our students here in Washington County. In chapter five, there's a summary chart, and we can always jump to the chase with that, as far as what our long-term, short-term and long-term plans are. Obviously, Bester's our first item on our chart. Bester is well under construction, if you've driven by the site, you'll see it's starting to become pretty much under roof, we hope to have it closed in by the end of September. We continue to work on it, it's about a $24 million project, we received over $8 million from the state, and we'll be asking next year for an additional $500,000 to $600,000 from the state for funding, depending upon the bids for our demolition work that will happen next summer. So we're on schedule to open next August for the children, we hope to make it available to staff members late March, April, after the building's been commissioned, and we'll have a smooth time of transition to move into the building, be completely set up. This is a building that's a long time in the coming, it's been on and off the plan for 10 or 12 years, so I think it's really something that both boards can be proud of, that it's going to come to completion next year, it'd be an excellent addition to the Bester area. The next item on here is West City. West City continues to move forward, we're working through the process with the city as far as the zoning, and working with the county on the zoning amendment that's required. Also, working with the state will be part of our construction requests for this upcoming year, we did receive planning approval last year. It'll be a three-round elementary school with the potential to add a fourth or fifth round for the future, it'll have expanded core space. It'll obviously replace Conica Jig and Winter Street. The exact makeup of the population for that school will be determined as we move into redistricting plan, probably about this time next year, we'll continue to work on what's happening in Hagerstown, in the west side of Hagerstown, as far as population growth, those types of things, and what might be the best student attendance zones to go to the school. Today, at our business session, we'll be bringing forward a schematic design, which is just really the preliminary rough sketch of the building for potential approval, and we'll continue to make our requests, again, for the construction approval for this coming Sharpsburg Elementary is something we introduced, I believe, last year, maybe the year before, we've been watching for a South County elementary school, with the delay in construction with several major developments down in the Boonesboro area. We saw this window as an opportunity to work on Sharpsburg, which, after the replacement of Conica Jig, Bester, and Winter Street, Sharpsburg will be our lowest, as far as an assessment of building. Sharpsburg will be our lowest performing building at that point. So we're excited to have maybe the opportunity to replace that building, modernize that building, and Sharpsburg is on our list to be, again, a three-round school, about a $20 million project. One concern we do have with this project is the acquisition of land. Right now, it's about a 5.1 acre site at Sharpsburg, you can kind of see our current school, if you're familiar with their site, kind of, you know, sits right out here on the road, and our land is to the backside of the property. There is a piece of property for sale right now, a little over four acres, you can see the spot here, there's my pointer, that is for sale, and something we talked a little bit with county staff about, we might want to consider, you know, is there any possibility between the two properties, the existing property, this property, we've written a letter to the landowner of this property, see if they might have any interest. But we'd like to work with county staff on what possibly would be the best site in the Sharpsburg area, either current school site or another site in Sharpsburg. The state rate of capacity would move from the 252-seat school that currently exists at Sharpsburg, we run a little over 300 children there, it's one of our schools that's over 100% capacity. The new site would be 471, so it would be able to provide some relief for Boonesboro, maybe able to absorb some potential growth in the Boonesboro area as well, and then work our way potentially to a South County school in the long-term future, if growth develops as we anticipate in that area at some point. So back to our chart, as Dr. Wilcox described, Western Heights and E. Russell Hicks are two middle school projects, the board directed staff to take a hard look at where we're at with their middle school projects. We have a number of middle schools built in the 70s, all with open school concept, all of which are going to be coming up 30, 40, 50 years old, and we need to start addressing some of the needs of each of those buildings. So Western Heights, we really need to address that building, we did a makeshift effort out there to add walls, probably 10 or 15 years ago, and that really needs to be revisited, roof, HVAC, some other components of the building, flooring, other things like that to modernize that building. Right now, we've kind of took the lockers that were on both sides, kind of a double-banked locker, put them in the middle of two rooms, and built a wall up and around the rooms, just to try to divide that off a number of years ago, we really need to go back and do that right. Probably roughly a $20 million effort there, those are just guesstimates at this point. As we get closer to those projects and define them further, we'll know a little bit more about that. E. Russell Hicks, we've done a number of things at E. Russell Hicks, trying to work on lighting, and air conditioning, and roof, and projects there, but it's in need of a modernization, 1967 building, by the time we would get to this renovation, if it stays on this schedule, there'd be 56 years since the building had opened. So again, probably 20-plus million dollar project to go through and really do a good cleanup and modernization of that building. We look on to our high school capacity projects and elementary capacity projects, the board's direction, we wanted to create greater flexibility in both of these, rather than defining them solely as one elementary next, or the high school next, or a high school modernization next, try to create some flexibility with our current inventory of buildings, how we might use portables, how we might add four-pack, six-pack onto buildings, how we might, as Dr. Wilcox described, use maybe an academic building for Barbara Ingram School for the Arts to expand other possibilities, kind of the boutique school concept. We think the Allegheny Energy Building will provide some additional space, particularly like at West, Western, excuse me, Washington County Tech, as we move the print shop out of Washington County Tech, be some immediate space we can take advantage of there, some internships, some programs at the new central office facility. So we're going to try a variety of ideas to try to delay the need for high school, and then we'll just continue to monitor what might happen with high school growth, maybe the Essence Program, other programs as things develop, may or may not be a need, right now, we're seeing out 20, 21 or 2, about another 752 high school students in the district, and would anticipate, based on projected growth, that that will continue to grow from there. So it is a challenge that we need to look at, and certainly, we can continue to address it in a variety of ways, but it's something we want to keep up on your screen, is there may be a need for long-term, potentially another high school, based on what division that particularly kind of commissioners might see for additional housing growth, those types of things. Again, we'll continue to monitor that. Elementary, kind of the same thing, rather than defining North County, South County, we continue to look at our use of portables, potentially, does West City ever go to a five-round school? We have the capability of adding on some other schools, but again, we'd want to monitor housing growth, changing in housing markets, turnover of houses, and see if there's a need to add additional middle, elementary school capacity. So as Dr. Wilcox mentioned, some land acquisition that we certainly want to study, the Sharpsburg project, is there an opportunity on the current site with adjacent properties to try to take advantage of that, build on that same site? Again, work with county staff, maybe we'll identify some other areas in the Sharpsburg that might be better suited for a school facility, we want to explore that and secure land for that as soon as possible. Potential long-term for a high school site is our study, we looked at a number of years ago, kind of limited, if we look at our traditional 70 to 90 acre type site, those sites are limited, so we might want to continue to look at that for potential land banking. South County, North County, again, we'd like to continue our studies of those areas and look at potential land banking for the future of those areas. As we look at systemic projects, a big one, we're only going to ask for one systemic project going into this CIP year, it's HVAC replacement at Tech High, we replaced the roof last year, now we have new rooftop units at the school, it's about a $2.9 million project, we'd expect to get a substantial portion of that from the state, I think about $1.4 or $1.5 million from the state. We'll be required to match that with a little under $1 million here from the local level, and right now, we're scheduled to take that money out of the operating funds here at the Board of Education. The CIP from the county, and looking forward for the next 10 years, those matching funds for systemic projects don't exist, so we certainly want to try to take advantage of our systemic projects and take advantage of state money the best we can. But it is an area of concern as we look long-term for the future, we normally ask for a number of systemic projects, and we're just not in a position to provide that local match with current funding. Deferred maintenance, right now, through the partnership of the Board of Education, the county commissioners, state funding, we've made tremendous progress on deferred maintenance. Certainly, replacement of some of the buildings is going to lower, lower our maintenance effort. We've received about $9 million since 2008 towards deferred maintenance from the state, from county funds, CIP, other sources, we've had about $5.8 million, been able to contribute here locally towards systemic projects, which we're greatly appreciative of, and that's helped reduce our maintenance effort. Right now, our estimate at the end of 2012, about $36 million. Looking forward to 2017, we project that we'd start to grow in systemic maintenance requests, just based on available funding and potential requests than where we see funding right now. So it is a concern that we want to bring to your attention, something we need to address at some point. We're going to start looking just strictly at boiler, chiller, roof replacement, protect the envelope of the building, obviously, maintain heat and cooling systems for student comfort, and instruction will be the main focus of our systemic projects going forward, probably back off of some of our, you know, concrete, blacktop, painting, those types of projects going forward, until maybe better times come with funding. So just in summary, we appreciate the Board of County Commissioners' support for the CIP, I think we have, can be really excited about Bester, West City, potential future projects, we appreciate your support for past projects, but we do want to kind of lobby for any available funds, been great partners through the years, when a couple times, some additional funding's become available, and been able to match that. I want to credit our staff as taking advantage of IQZAB funding, when other counties haven't stepped up and gone through the pain and effort to get IQZAB funding, staff has worked with schools to get IQZAB funding, it's federal money, you just have to match it either with money or with local support from the school, and we've done that at a variety of projects, a million dollars towards our roof project at Washington County Tech. Totally money unexpected, wasn't allocated in Washington County, but through staff effort, they were able to secure that. Land acquisition continues, as Dr. Wilcox described, something we think we need to be forward-thinking, land banking, take advantage of any opportunities we might have, and then again, just a concern, long-term for deferred maintenance. So with that, we'd be glad to respond to any questions you might have, or I'll turn it back to Dr. Wilcox or Dr. Harding at this point.
Well, and I would say thank you very much for your time and attention, and commissioners were certainly here to answer any questions that you might have. One thing that I did want to expand upon, as you think, Boyd mentioned that we are looking to expand the Summit program. As many of you know, funding for our high school programs changed significantly this legislative session, HCC has made some decisions that impact us directly in terms of-
I think you mean the Essence Program?
What did I say?
The Summit Program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Summit.
I just didn't want anybody confused.
Essence, I'm sorry. We have about 150 students who are currently enrolled in the Essence Program, they will continue to stay enrolled, but we're also looking at, can we create another program that not only helps us to control our costs in that, but also long-term serves both the students and the community better? So we're working with Dr. Altieri and his staff on the creation of a middle-college plan, which would take some of our rising juniors and seniors, about 30 per class across all seven high schools, who would want to pursue a STEM-related career and have a dual enrollment opportunity, meaning that they would get their high school diploma as well as their associate's degree, and certainly, if they didn't have time to get their associate's degree, they would have an industry-based certification that would serve them well in the job market. So we're having a lot of discussion about that right now, we're prepared to talk to our board a little bit more about it later in the day, or certainly by the next board meeting, but we're excited about that for several reasons. One, for the great education that we'll provide to kids, but also because it's another one of those things that the board asked us to look at, not specifically that program, but in trying to hold down our high school enrollments, so that we weren't facing that $100 million bill on the immediate horizon, given the current economic conditions. So it's but one step to kind of hold high school enrollments down, move kids around, create capacity within our district.
The middle-high school program is beginning to trend ever so slightly on Twitter. HCC is beginning to post.
I thought it was a little premature, is it closer than I think? I mean-
It's closer than anybody in this room knows, yes.
You can't, can't beat Twitter.
Well, we've struggled a little bit, the reason there's a lot of momentum at the HCC campus is because we jointly wrote a grant application, and that grant application was funded for almost $400,000, so that allows us now to really move forward with pace.
Could I jump in on a question to the commissioners, and maybe Greg can weigh in? When we look at Boonesboro and the development, proposed development, my understanding is once the state signs off on some parking or road issue that is before them in an appeal by some local resident, that they're going to start breaking ground on some of the initial homes as early as this fall. Am I getting correct information, and where is the county in this project?
Anyone else want to answer? The project itself, we've heard, is moving forward, we have not been approached with the schedule yet, nor have the commissioners approved a mitigation plan, so whatever agreements the town has with the developer are certainly between them, but mitigation is still out there, and either the town or the developer is responsible for that. So if the town has relieved that responsibility from the developer, then we would be looking at the town for whatever mitigations required.
Because I think Boonesboro pulls their own permits, don't they?
They do.
Do they do their own inspections as well?
No, they actually permit it and send it back through us so that we can perform inspection, so it'll, it'll trigger the proper requirements, and we'll go through that process.
Yes, I know this is a sensitive issue, but I was curious where that stood and where the commissioners stood on that, because I think that is ready to move forward.
They still have a ways to go. They have some land acquisition, and right away, that they still have to-
Well, that's going through the state, yeah.
And of course, they had initially, I believe, made an offer of property, that, not to us specifically, but there was some property down there, and I believe it triggered a study similar to the East City, or West City, elementary school on what-
Use of-
Use would be most appropriate, and what location would be most appropriate, et cetera, et cetera, so that may not be the end result, that that property's suitable for what's needed down there, based on what the findings are.
And just to go a little bit further, looking at the commissioners and staff here, how do you see Washington County, what is your vision or the vision for growth in this county? Because your policies, your APFO, your mitigation policies that are coming up, your land use, your comprehensive plans, your zoning, your up-down zonings, all of that becomes a philosophy or an action item that then impacts our decisions on a facility, what our capacity needs, what our projections are going to be. So it would be nice to have a clue, or an idea, or where you as a group may be heading in that direction.
That's a great question.
And I'm hoping for a great answer.
I can address that too, if you like.
Well, I was just going to mention our urban growth area, and how that obviously is a plan for growth in the county, and how growth, how growth could be defined. As far as APFO, we're still, that's still on the table, as you know, for today, as a matter of fact.
That's why I asked the question.
And there are many other factors that figure into growth in the county, some of those coming from the state, Watershead Implantation Plan, we've all heard of this- Watershed implementation plan, we've all heard of the septic tank issues and so forth. So there's a whole lot that has to be settled before we have a real clear and concrete concept of what it is that we want. We have to see what the outcomes of some of these other things are.
It's the problem with the concurrency of capacity. If the Commissioner and your policy, if we start a rapid growth like we had in, what, '04, '05, '06, where we're looking at 1,000 homes a year, that's-
I would welcome that dilemma.
You would wel- okay.
Yeah, considering we're only around 100 homes a year, 120 is what we're having right now.
But where is the balance, Commissioner Klein, between what's too much too soon and how can we build capacity?
I'd like to concur with Mr. McKinnon about the UGA that stalled in 2008, that was submitted to the last board, that this board took on to manage and control growth. You also see that the excise tax can come back at any time to help curb or gain the revenue that you need for the projected infrastructure demands. So I value your question, and I would welcome that dilemma to bring growth and prosperity back to Washington County and solve those problems. So thank you for asking that.
And Mr. Klein brought up the excise tax, and whereas the newspaper and some others believe the excise tax should be set in stone, one way or the other, this is it, without change, I see it totally different. I see the excise tax as being a living, moving thing that adjusts to the economy at the present time. As Mr. Klein said, the excise tax certainly can be used to curb urban sprawl, if that's-
Is it reactive or proactive?
Pardon?
I said, would that policy be proactive or reactive?
You're asking government to be on top of things?
Oh, just a thought.
It would definitely be proactive. I think we keep a close eye on all the development, mainly because of mitigation and things like that. And so if you're looking at changing policy at the speed of business, I think that's where we are. We certainly can and have done that. It's interesting, I had this very similar question yesterday from consultants that are working with Fort Ritchie and Pinmar. The question was, how do you see the county developing and things like that? And so if you think about where we have grown, our UGA plan, urban growth area plan, and how that lays on top of Hagerstown's growth area plan, which is just a little bit different, and I believe we will soon take on a countywide zoning look. You know, Steve Goodrich seems to be pulling his hair out more than normal, so-
Back with our comprehensive plan updates.
Yeah, so I think, more than anything, Don, I think we, the Board of Education and the County Commissioners, share the desire to be proactive and look at that growth. If someone came in with 1,000-home suggestion, I personally would take a very scant look at it and say, well, how would that fit into what we've been doing and where we want to go as a county? And we don't want our schools overcrowded. So how can we manage growth to that taxes remain affordable, and we don't just run children out of schools? It's a very sort of tenuous look at, how do you balance that? And I think we're tuned into that. Does that help at all?
It's just interesting to see here the response.
Yeah, I think the day of contractors coming in and building 50 spec homes and trying to sell them are over. I think they're being built as they are purchased now. And I would love that type of prosperity in both Washington County. But here's the things I just wrote down in 30 seconds that's coming from the state that's giving prosperity to our county. You have the 8.25% corporate business tax, you have the stormwater management fees, you have soil erosion demands, you have the whip is going to place $1.35 billion on the users of our sewer systems in this county. You have the UGA that took three years for this board to finally pass and provide areas for growth to be cornered or controlled or set place where they could take place. We have the rain tax neighboring Frederick County, which is coming here. We have the fire tax being talked about by certain individuals in this county. We have the well tax, and we have other areas surrounding us like Pennsylvania, West Virginia, that are not only taking our employees, but people are living there. This morning at Williamsport, I stood there at the stoplight, car after car from West Virginia, living in West Virginia, working in Maryland, taking our 2.8% piggyback tax back to the county and state they live in, owning property in West Virginia and still using our services. So I would love the opportunity for growth and development to occur with the restraints and controls that you're suggesting and that we're trying to put in place to be proactive. So we give a fair answer to your question.
Don, if your question about proactive or reactive had to do with the adjustment of the excise tax-
Well, policy, land use policy in general, but there are specific policies that push that forward.
Whereas we always, we want to try to be proactive. To be proactive in those kind of adjustments would require us to be able to look into the crystal ball. So to some degree, I think it would be reactive, in that when the trends occur, when they come in with the big plans, then we start to react to that and make adjustments that would be appropriate. So, you know, I don't, it's just a matter of how you define proactive, reactive, but I think it would be a degree of reaction to the-
And I think to be, I think to be fair, from our side of the table, too, sometimes we're proactive, and sometimes we have to be reactive. We were reactive with the redistricting at Pangborn, right? There was a trend that none of us anticipated, our team didn't anticipate, the county didn't anticipate, and we had to solve that problem. And I don't think anybody on our side of the table wants to solve that problem in the way that we had to do it necessarily, but we had limited options. And I think, again, from our side of the table, that's why we had, I think, the discussion we did regarding EFMP, particularly about the high schools. I think we've seen the success of the Barbara Ingram School. I think we see a new opportunity in the Allegheny Building. I think we see increasing demands for the programs at the Technical High School. I think we see opportunities in partnering with Hagerstown Community College and thinking, rather than necessarily building a big new school with a big price tag, why not create more and more opportunities where kids can choose, hey, I want to go to the Essence Program, or hey, there's a new opportunity downtown with culinary arts that I want to go to, and use that to more creatively and more flexibly, proactively, if you will, put us in a position where we can address some of those issues as they come.
I think-
It's not to say that someday we won't need another high school, but I think that was the conversation that we had as a board and as a leadership team in getting to the plan that we presented to you all today.
Justin, I would share with you the conversation with these consultants, and, you know, consultants, those guys that live 50 miles away and have a clipboard. So the conversation was not five years down the road, 10 years down the road, it was 25 years down the road, 30. It's that great magopolis from New York to Atlanta. It's ever more dense, and the people in the other counties that Jeff ticked off with rain taxes and everything, as they get more dense, our land becomes more valuable. Our greatest asset is our land. I cannot imagine this board, or any other board in the future, being frivolous with that land and saying, oh, yeah, we'll take whatever density we can get. If you put, if the footprint is 1,000 homes, or the footprint is three new schools, it's using that valuable land and resource. So we have to be really careful, all of us, in those decisions.
And I don't think 1,000 homes is going to happen overnight. There'll be a lot of signals. But there's other things that we're working on right now, the tier mapping. We have 75% of Washington County is going to be a national park, if that goes through. We have, I think we've done a good job being stewards of our community with approximately over 40,000 acres in land preservation, either in the 10-year land preservation plan or permanent easement. So I think we've been good stewards as Commissioners on this, we're trying to look to preserve our land, our cultural, and promote agriculture, at the same time having places where we can put in those safeguards to keep your schools from becoming overcrowded and under our educational process. I think, want to clarify that, there would be some warnings. We wouldn't just go from 100 homes a year to 1,000. There would be some safeguards and signals that we would be active on. So I want to make sure I clarified that for you.
And let me just provide some additional information. From a staff perspective, the master planning we use, whether it's our resource, water resource element, or watershed implementation plans, or comprehensive plan, et cetera, we know almost down to a unit how much we can grow in Washington County, where we can grow, and what type of growth we can accommodate, based on the zoning that we currently have in place. So we know exactly what we can accommodate in Washington County, given the resources that we have to serve those on both ends, so to speak. But with that, the real question is how quickly will it grow? Not where or how much we can accommodate, but how quickly. And that's the policies and procedures that are put into place, that in some cases you want to do things that, for example, may facilitate a higher level of growth in commercial, in business-type enterprises, which of course the Commissioners have been actively involved in. With that can come growth in the people that support those, the ones that work for it, which of course can be housing needs and of course, school needs. When we look at that, especially in our CIP, which your staff is very familiar with, do a great job at, we look at the declining revenues that we've had, and the fact that we're starting to level out where we may actually have a revenue that doesn't go down two years from now. This coming year, it will probably still go down, because of course, City of Hagerstown is being reassessed, and that'll probably drop our revenue, some of our income tax base. But that being said, we look at an orderly growth in an assumed amount that we fund through our CIP. When that growth compresses, these policies that we've talked about that can work on a sliding scale, then require an additional revenue source, which is when you start to bring in higher APFO fees, higher excise taxes, that can then facilitate that compressed need for increased infrastructure, such as schools, or roads, or whatever the case may be. And that's how we monitor, in the areas where we know growth can occur, how much growth is occurring, what our orderly progression of infrastructure improvement should be through our CIP that we fund through tax doters and other mechanisms, and when we need then to increase that revenue stream because of a compressed need, because of additional growth. And we monitor that very closely, and you see it as our CIP comes out and our revenue streams go up and down, especially the dedicated streams. So we have a good handle on what to do and when, the amount of growth that occurs, how quickly it occurs, that's the unknown that we have to carefully, as you suggest, carefully watch, so that we can compress those infrastructure needs as needed, and not get caught behind the eight ball.
I don't see it for 20 years.
With that, I did have one question about this, too. With the change in the master plan, which certainly seems like you've done a lot of work on that, a lot of good work, do you know what the change in the local requirements for CIP funding would be in the next 10 years? Or maybe something we can talk about later, but the reason I ask is when we looked at our CIP plan in years '21, '22, '23, with the projects that we're currently in there, including the high school funding that we had to bank money for, we were still probably $9 million a year short in those out years. And I just wondered if this change in CIP priorities actually would help reduce that shortfall in the out years at all, or if this was generally an equivalent amount.
I think what we're showing, Greg, is based on past history, what we've been able to get the last five or six years from the state, it certainly will require a county match to secure those dollars from the state. It'll also require that the state continues to fund the state CIP somewhere between $250 and $350 million, and that we would continue to get, you know, that somewhere between $7.8 and $9.1 million that we've secured the last five or six years. We don't know if any of those things are going to happen at the state level, but our CIP would kind of reflect, and our systemic projects balanced out with that would reflect trying to maximize the state funding. For 2015, I think what we'll do is actually ask for additional funding for West City, which the counties indicated they would support. The systemic project of the Washington County Technical High School, HVAC, we'll support with our local, with a local match from our operating budget here at Washington County Public Schools, based on the information we have, and we'll just have to watch going forward what we can do, but-
It looks like it is a very orderly progression of infrastructure, which is great. I mean, that gives us something that we can try to continue to fund, and of course, you've always given us the opportunity to work with you on the funding levels. I just, the one thing I didn't do when I looked at it was just try to total up some of the assumed numbers or the guestimates to see how it impacts CIP in the out years, because that was where we were having the issue. I think specifically because we had one of the big, large chunks of money that was necessary for the high school. So I just didn't know if that was offset any.
I think it probably doesn't spend as much money as the high school right now. It tries to take care of some infrastructure issues with middle schools, tries to knock those off while we try to delay the high school as long as possible. Things might unfold as we move forward, so we don't know, so I heartily just describe.
Yeah, I'd add, too, just, I mean, the high school not being in there, of course, that in and of itself looks like a save. I'm not sure it really is, because it is going to cost some money to address the other capacity issues that we're going to deal with.
That's the question.
So the question is, does one balance out to more than the other? And off the top of my head, I don't recall, but, you know, if we're going to pursue this concept of creating classroom space for Barbara Ingram, which I think we're going to have to address, and the excitement that I think we feel about the possibility of adding some other things into that project, where we can provide opportunities for even more of our students, possibly in a downtown setting, I mean, that's going to cost some money, and that's not budgeted right now. It's going to take some creative thinking, I think, on our side, and maybe from your side as well, to figure out how we can make that happen. But I think it would be good for our students, I think it'd be good for downtown, I think it'd be good for the county. Doing some of the other projects that we've talked about, even to address capacity in smaller levels, the match for the systemic projects that I know our facility staff is concerned about, I think we are, too, those are all going to cost money. So while it may be a save, I don't think it's a dollar-for-dollar savings.
Certainly we'll detail that completely during our CIP process, but I just, as a general scope, didn't know if there was a-
So, just the one thing that I would want to share with our board, and I think you know this, but it's always better to say that than to let it. Mr. Murray and I meet almost on a monthly basis to talk about where we are, but we also often time to speak with Mrs. Murray to talk about the finance related to things. I would share with you that, you know, this is my fourth school district, and I've never had a closer relationship with the county governmental structure, the counterpart to the school district that I have here. Greg and Debbie have been tremendous assets to the school board. They've helped shape my thinking. Just recently asked Debbie, for example, for some of their new policy on purchasing to help inform the work that we're doing internally right now. She not only offered it quickly, it was emailed to me within maybe a matter of hours. How she did that, I don't know. And then the other piece she sent me was information relative to P cards, purchase cards, because we want to get a better handle on how our employees are spending things as they go out as part of our audit response. So I just want you to know that while there are these larger issues of policy, underneath all of that, there's a great relationship between the county staff, Sarah, and all the team with our team. We continually work to implement the vision that we hear you articulate from the table. So I wanted to make sure I offered my thanks, but I also wanted to credit Greg for his leadership in that, because quite honestly, we would not be where we are today had he not stepped up and helped us a number of times.
I have to echo that, not to sing kumbaya, but to say that, you can tell a difference when they're, the type of relationship that Dr. Wilcox talked about, and even knowing that big things are coming, you know, from his level, the meetings we have in discussing future plans and our strategic initiatives that we're moving through, how that's going to impact us financially, what we can expect, what we need to look for, even the monthly budgetary reports. We get complete copies of all the school board's budgetary reports on a monthly basis, and I can't say I look at them every month, but along with ours, I do review them at least quarterly. That helps when you come in for quarterly adjustments, because we know where things are and what to expect when that happens from your finance people. So those relationships are very important, as I know, board-to-board are extremely important, and it's really appreciated the kind of relationship we have with the school board staff and Dr. Wilcox, the way he leads that, because that helps us as we move forward to make these kind of things happen and answer the questions like you posed.
I'm going to add one more kumbaya, just from a personal experience I had a couple weeks ago at the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. They're talking about redoing their budget, and an aspect of that was to have sort of a mid-year dues increase, which would cost counties maybe $1,000 each, somewhere in that range. And the other school board members who said, you cannot do that to us. My county Commissioners and county council will go crazy if we spend an extra $1,000. And I thought, my goodness, if your Commissioners and your councils are that deep into your budget, I don't know how you operate. So it made me very grateful that you give us the space to manage our budget and our affairs in the way that we see fit. So I just want to thank you for that, and thank you for your continuing support of the school system.
Well, let me wrap one back at you. It's like a tennis match, isn't it? Changing subjects just ever so slightly, there's been some talk about test scores in the Common Core curriculum, and I, for one, am not the least bit concerned. I remember- I remember when No Child Left Behind came in, and it was a challenge to every single classroom teacher, every administrator, every support personnel, and we struggled for years and years and years. And here we have yet another challenge, and I think this school district will raise to that challenge. I have no doubt in my mind. So I, for one, am looking forward to the new school year. I know on the 13th of August is a luncheon for the new teacher luncheon. I apologize, some of us will be at Mako that day, or certainly preparing to go to Mako. I'll be out of town. But I want to wish you guys the very best for the new school year, and it's going to be a wonderful school year. Children will learn, parents will learn, and we'll just get it done.
Thank you. Anything else from your side there?
Anything else from the Commissioners, Stan, Ms. Murray, Mr. Whiteford? I heard that name a while ago.
I said Sarah a while ago.
Well, she has several names.
Anything else from our side of the table? Okay, just for the information on our board members and our team, we're going to take at least 10 minutes between meetings so that they can reset the AV and so that people can get a refreshment or use the system.
So take an iced coffee with you. My daughter donated those to us because she wanted fresh for the new school year.
Thank you all very much.